So pleasant way to welcome you to this live broadcast. My name is Prince Moba, we are here at the conference room of the House of Representatives. One of the conference rooms as a matter of fact. This is the first floor conference room where Aslameta Liberia, they invited here on this public hearing. Uh in front of some order uh issue raised with the company's request. For extension of its contract with Liberia. What are those things in the contract, the recent uh concentrate of build. And many others concerns, so it's important to follow. My name is Prince, thanks for following. Bye bye.
The joint committee comprises the hostess committee on investment concession, committee on land mines, energy natural resources and environment, and the committee on labor. This important event takes place in the first floor conference room, House's wing. Sir or madam, the concession compliance review will focus on your mineral development agreement NDA of the government of Liberia. With specific emphasis on its thirty percent share of the NDA. And you are here in request to provide a comprehensive financial game report covering the last five years of your operation. Additionally, the joint committee asks you to provide one of the, to provide these argument on of the full, the full mention. Five years of operation to enhance the outcomes of the concession compliance review process. These include, one, financial reports of operation, two, quantity of iron ore produced covering the period. Three, lists of projects implemented under the social capital responsibility for the period. Four, report on the annual United States dollar two hundred thousand scholarship fund. Giving a comprehensive list of beneficiaries of the, for the period. Five, provide full of transfers of United States dollar fifty thousand to the geological department of the University of Liberia. Six, provide updated list of senior staff or managerial staff of Liberians covering the last five years. And seven, reports of community resources for the period. Can regard Major and Senior Chief Clerk House of Representatives.
So that was the reading of a communication inviting uh Aslameta team here. And of course, they come here uncontent as an informed. And of course, they send excuse several time. So thanks for following us.
Dear Honorable Members, I acknowledge receipt of your letter dated June seventeen twenty twenty five. Inviting Aslameta Liberia AML to hear issue for July one twenty twenty five at two P M. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in the concession compliance review. In response to your request, please file attached the following documents covering the last five years of operations, twenty twenty through twenty twenty five. One, financial gain reports, quantity of iron ore produced during the period, list of projects implemented under the social capital responsibility S R S C R for the period. Two, report on the annual two thousand, two hundred thousand scholarship fund including a comprehensive list of beneficiaries. Proof of transfer of United States dollar fifty thousand to the geological department of the University of Liberia. Six, updated list of senior or managerial staff of Liberians covering the last five years. Seven, reports on community resources for the period. We look forward to discussing these documents and any other matters of interest during the hearing. Can regard Michael, run up, run up there, Chief Executive Officer Aslameta. That's the excuse then.
That was the excuse. And there was a hearing. Please come in.
Okay, Honorable Chair, distinguished colleagues. Chair, I continue to hear you reference the communication as an excuse. We've got clarity when I was down an excuse from the company because we read the communication and listening. I did not hear anything, an excuse. It said by the company instead, they submitted this back in.
Well noted. And there was an action taken by.
It's dated July two twenty twenty five. General Manager Aslameta AML Marova Liberia. Dear Mister General Manager, I present compliments and write by directive of Honorable Fory Hombley Chairman. Office Joint Committee on Compliance Review to invite you to a meeting sharing for Tuesday. July eight twenty twenty five at two P M in the first floor conference room, House's wing. Sir or madam, your constant delivery of insult to the cause of the committee has viciously hindered the oversight function. Of the legislative body and be unscathed the work of the Honorable House of Representatives. And is threatening to legislative content. Please be advised that your failure to adhere to this call, this um. Will have the committee left with no alternative but to elevate, elevate your issue before primary. Where you will be required to show cause why you should not be here in legislative content. Best regards, sincerely Major Sam, Chief Clerk House of Representatives.
That's the communication. Okay, so thank you again. Alright, so thanks for following us. So the, those were communications. Been read, communications for which, uh communications that invited them and their own excuse to the committee. And so this is a joint committee, the committee on concession, the committee on labor. And of course, the committee on uh issue. So they are taking the oath now for the hearing, which then they will be. So uh, so the witnesses, I believe you have, you have a copy of the same letter. And at the end of that letter, you are requested to come and give reason why you should not be here in contempt by. In keeping the work of this committee and honor mine in the world after having continued by. Mister Witness, you too is here. And know that you are honorable.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Chair, Honorable Fory Hombley. Honorable Members of the House, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm humble, it's my first time to be present in a forum like this. Firstly, I want to start off by saying it really is for all of us, my team, a huge honor to be here today to be able to directly interact with members of the House. I want to sincerely and humbly apologizing for the confusion with the meeting last week. Myself and all of these members, if the documents were ready to come here, I was sitting ten minutes from here, ready to come. There was some miscommunication in terms of whether the hearing was going to continue or not. But I, as the leader of Aslameta in Liberia, take full, full responsibility for that and I beg your forgiveness. Uh for this misunderstanding. I can assure you, Honorable Chair, that there was, there was no ill intent, there was no missed opinion behind that. It was a honest misunderstanding in terms of whether the hearing was going to continue or not. Having said that, all of the documentation has been prepared and delivered. Since last week when that all was delivered, nothing has changed. It's the same team, with the same facts, with the same agenda coming here today. So I would put it before the House to uh, to hopefully, to see. What's happened last week in terms of us not being here for the hearing.
So at this point, we will solicit colleague's opinion as to how to deal with this apology. And there after, after we move forward to the leaders of the matter. Uh Honorable Jones.
Thank you Mister Presiding. Please, uh let me say thanks to the, uh to Asameta. For their appearance today. Azad clearly understand to the presenter. And he said he was on his way to bear sitting to attend the hearing that was presented today. And he said due to miscommunication, was he informed by members of the committee? He written by the Chief Clerk of the House of Representatives because. When it comes to the processes at the legislature, particularly the House of Representatives, communication from the House. Should be processed to the Chief Clerk office. So my concern is, the miscommunication. That the old gentleman is talking about, he was from. Or the deep call, the chair pressing. To do a follow up as to whether the meeting or the hearing was still possible or not.
So to the witness, I think you heard his question as to whether, yes, you have made the apology. But the core impression that you gave reference to, was it from the chairman of the committee postponing the hearing? Or was it from the Chief Clerk office? Or you care to figure out who is part of you to not come here?
Thank you Chair, I think that's a fair question. Since I have not met any of you, the Chair of the House, until today, I have not been in communication with any of you. And I take that three for myself. Uh in retrospect, you know hindsight is a perfect science. So in hindsight, I would have liked to have called you directly and hear that. But I have, I have been listening to that. So I have not directly spoken to yourself with the Chair, with the co-chair. It was three members of my team that I received the communication.
Okay, so uh, any other colleague there?
Hello Chair.
Yeah. He said he didn't speak to any of past in leadership nor the Chief Clerk. It was people within his team, any management side. So he take responsibility for your action, in short. There were not no one from here, there was not no one from the Chief Clerk office, but within his management team, with that he take responsibility. So are you not asking for a great pleasure on the, on the floor, so I listen to you here on my side?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Mister CEO. Do you understand that uh, when you are getting written on a complaint charge from a legislature? You're supposed to at least respond to it through your communication before you go before us. Because from what I'm reading here, there was nothing in the communication that was addressed to us in relation to the complaint charge. There was nothing that was said in this, based on why you cannot come. Or you just decided to come when you reached a point you can't express and this, that's your, your excuse to us.
Thank you Honorable. The, the understanding for myself was that instead of sending letters, I would come here today. As a person and apologize for that. And to assure you that there was no malicious or evil intent in that. And to look you in the eyes and personally apologize for that misunderstanding.
Okay, Honorable.
Yes Chair, I think the most important thing is that the manager to be here, he is here to be.
Allow the honorable to learn his position. Everyone have an opinion, who are honorable?
He has already apologized. I believe we should accept that. I say, I'll question the good follow.
So Honorable uh Joe.
Thank you Honorable, Honorable Presiding, I will, I will, I will, I will let you. Saying the CEO are a foreign guy, he are a bitter, a wrong brain. Uh we considering and pursuing and moving to the matter for we know for.
Honorable David.
Yes, uh Honorable Presiding, distinguished colleagues, to the witnesses, uh CEO. The history, he had said that it's your hobby, you always stay away from legislative calls. This is not the first, this is not the seventy or ninety third. You have a record of staying away from legislative invite. And this from your explanation, it is deliberate that you stay away from us last week when the people's deputy. Were years sitting waiting for you. You stay away, this is not a first, this is not a second, third. So uh, Honorable Chair, distinguished colleagues. From the, the history of this, this witness. I think we should hold it content and uh.
You're not motion here, I want to listen to.
Yeah, I think we should hold it content because this is a deliberate art, it's habitual of him. So that apology, it might.
Okay, thank you, Honorable. Uh Honorable David.
Thank you, Mister Chair, distinguished colleagues, and to our in parties. Chairman, um, the CEO and his team were all invited to speak to issues affecting the people of our country. My interest is to hear exactly the question about things they have fallen shut off. We'd like to make it known to him first that he disrespected his body and it's unacceptable. You cannot be called by the people's deputy and you reject the call. It means you were, you rejected the call of the Liberian people, especially those who are affected. However, I would plead that we temper justice with mercy. And we go into the hearing and listen to the CEO and his team speak to the real issues. That affect the people in our country. That is my opinion on this matter, Mister Chair, distinguished colleagues. I beg your gavel to temper justice with mercy.
So, uh.
Yeah, uh Chair. Let me first take this time to, so thank you for the meeting. I'll go straight to the issue. First is that, uh as co-chair to the joint committee, I feel the action. Let me commend Aslameta first, that they are major uh player in our economic, social well-being. We recognize that. They are very important investment group, we recognize that. They contribute significantly to our national development through their new contribution and employment, we recognize that. But last week, I felt that my election as representative was like worthless and did not mean nothing. For lack of better word, by the action to blatantly, you know, district by the invitation of this honorable House of Representatives. I question myself as to if this occurs badly at this point with the committee, if the entity will not honor. I question to know what is the relationship between the company and the representative in the county. And even those district in which the entity operates. If this institution can totally disregard with ease the invitation of the central administration of the House. The people representative. I want to know what is going on in Imak County, in a district in which they operate. So I really am disappointed, even though we are key partners. I think a disregard for legislative oversight and a clear definitive decision. To obstruct, you know, the work of this committee and the people's deputy is something unacceptable. I'll be, we look forward to the movement of the floor and our position will be from colleagues on the floor as a member.
Okay, so will that then say we take a motion, but we follow this. Honorable David.
Thank you, thank you Mister Chair for this message. I've been listening to. Different deliberations from our colleagues. Which are genuine issues in the interest of the Liberian people. And knowledge of the fact that Aslameta disrespected this body after being backed up. To discuss issues of national concern. And considering that they have, the CEO is pressing with his team. And asking for mercy. Considering that we all have interests in the real issues affecting the people. Mister Chairman, distinguished colleagues, who are the record to carry. That this by, yeah by acknowledges the disrespectful attitude of Aslameta. However, Mister Chairman, we hear my move. That Aslameta, he asked to write a communication of apology to this body. Indicating just what was mentioned by the CEO. Asking for forgiveness and taking responsibility for his action. And in the same day, he considered and followed. Allow them to go into the battle and to go about discussing the interest of the Liberian people back in the future.
So they have been moved and sending the Aslamata, read a letter of an apology to the committee. And they have thought, why we should not communicate, we pursue the hearing. Now, I think I have read motion. So David say, are you ready to vote?
I'm ready.
Honorable DB.
Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair. Yeah, I'll be ready to vote. He said, this amendment that the letter requested, the letter as he said. Not just be uh sent to us, but be published in ten days. And a fund of five thousand dollars be paid into the Liberian dollars, I mean Liberian uh account, Liberian account. Like we see somebody to us.
So you two. Honorable DB.
Yeah, yeah.
Honorable DB, I will see that uh on ready net. The movement.
I've been, I've been listening to. My point, if we get the fact from French account. Uh he has a bad point, but uh bad for your dodges compare. To uh so we don't. Be guilty of double jeopardy.
Thank you. Alright, Honorable Soma.
Look like you.
Alright, my, yeah, alright.
Yeah.
I've got to listen to this.
Uh, we get. Uh Honorable Presiding, course we done, call it to the movement. I'll be ready to vote based on precedence. That if we are going to pardon. AML as they are set in an open statement. Reasons why they were not able to appear before us. Uh I see that as an apology. And if we decide to forgive them, to pardon them. I'll be ready to vote if we can drop. The pardon has to do with their reporting in the day. Our communication been written. I feel that they have said a couple and that the biggest thing they could say. What they have said is the same thing that will be in the written communication. So I'll be ready to vote if we can just pardon them and we move into the conversation.
Listening to the, I'm ready to support distinguished colleagues from, distinguished colleagues from Imak County. As a turd assess who has a better than one. This time, I will hereby accept your readiness of the distinguished.
Okay, so, are you ready to vote? All those who do as they hear.
Yeah.
All those that can say yes, they hear how they. So the, after Madon, uh Liberia, the issue of compensation dropped. The lawmaker has exercised justice with mercy. And uh we will ask you to continue your presentation and keep with the communication.
In power Chair.
Yeah, Honorable Fomo.
My in power House, that my first time guaranteeing such a position, I don't miss of Mrs. Parker and now. I don't think.
Honorable Fomo.
Can I get some clarity, Chairman?
In this hearing. In this hearing, you have the right to someone in the payroll listing of AML. In this hearing, the organic girl AML, you have the right. So you have the right to someone, a lot of different instrument. So let us proceed with that, because there were things that they were required to present all and the CEO, they are hired. And the CEO, they are higher than all, which not made a conversation ever drop ties. Thank you, as a CEO.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, Honorable House.
So the, the next aspect is your presentation of those documents. Uh in question, the first document is the financial report. The second one is the the quantity of iron ore then produced covering the period. The third one is the list of project implemented on the social corporate responsibility for the past uh twenty years. The fourth one is the report on the annual two hundred thousand scholarship fund. Uh the fifth one is provide proof of transfer of fifty thousand to the Geological Department of the University of Liberia. The sixth is provide an updated list of senior staff of A M L covering the past five years. The fifth is report of the company resource. Community resources for the period, many community contribution. So I think.